Okay, I'll call this meeting to order.
No pressure.
Is there any public input?
We have a presentation.
Yeah.
Oh, excuse me. This is going all over you.
Hearing none, there's a public presentation from the Spanish people.
Hello, everybody. My name's Abby. Next year, we would like to be able to travel with Ms. Angeles to either the Dominican Republic or Costa Rica. We are here to explain to you about each of the trips and ask your permission to move forward with our planning. Both of the trips are a mix of service and sun. I will talk to you about the Dominican Republic trip and the Costa Rica trip, and Ms. Angeles will talk to you about the planning details. The Costa Rica trip is nine-day trip through Explorica. We will explore Santos, Costa Rica at the beginning of our trip, where we will participate in service projects like painting, gardening, restoration of riverbanks, working in coffee plantations, and building, construction slash restoration based on the needs of the community. Afterwards, we will sightsee and visit hot springs at the Ranau volcano, see the local wildlife in Emmanuel Antonio National Park, take a four-by-four towards the coastal Point Arenas, and see the Poas Valcera. This is another great way to help out and see the country. The Dominican Republic trip is an eight-day trip run through the Bate Foundation located in Bethlehem, New Hampshire. We will be volunteering in Abate, which is a sugar workers town outside of Santo Domingo. Each morning, we will wake up and volunteer from 8:30 to 12 o'clock. Volunteer activities may include construction of schools, community centers, or baseball workouts. In the afternoon and evening, we would immerse ourselves in cultural activities like visiting an orphanage, a local market, and the beach. This is a great opportunity to both help and experience a local Dominican country or community.
Do you have any questions so far?
Why do different trips, or depends on how much fun you raise, I suspect?
Actually, the last trip that I had tried to plan to Costa Rica kind of fell through in terms of interest with that student population. I met with some students about a month ago, I think, at this point, to try and see where their interests lie in hopes to pull a larger group to go. And the thought is to put both options out to parents and their students in order to for them to select which one they have the most interest in, and then we'll plan the trip accordingly.
Do you think it was interest, or could it be expense?
I think it was, at that point, was a mix. We only had five students who started in their interest at that point in traveling, and at the time that we had to cancel, there were only three.
What's the source of the scholarship money?
So, the sc- what you're referring to is...
Well, that first line for Costa Rica?
Yes. So, there's, part of that scholarship comes through what the Explorica company provides, and part of that is through my participation in payment that goes towards that as well.
Okay, so it's from the company?
Part is from the company and part is from you. So, both the trips would include airfare, transportation within the visiting country, a tour guide cancellation protection, which has always been mandatory by the school, lodging, and a project donation. And we will be fundraising from now until final payment is due. We've already been talking as a group about some ideas that we would be able to pursue, and I've told all of the students that if they come up with an idea, that I'm happy to work with them to make it come true.
When would final payment be due?
Usually, it's 60 or 90 days before departure. Depends on the company.
So, if you didn't have enough students, what is the cancellation time if that happens? Like, just said one was canceled.
To be honest, I don't remember the exact timeline, and again, each company is different in how they work.
What opinion are the additional cost to each student above this cost?
Some of those would include a passport if they don't have them. There's transportation to and from the school to the airport, tips for the tour guide spending money, and should they choose to pursue extra immunizations that are required above and beyond school, that could be a part of their additional cost. But none of, neither of the countries requires, their CDC requires any extra immunizations.
When is the date of this trip planned?
That's the other choice. No, so traditionally, I would have come with you with a specific date. I was presented by Joshua Lawton, who is the co-founder of the Bate Foundation, and he's also a teacher over Profile, that we would be able to participate with their group. It's Profile, the Regional, and Lisbon are all working together on the trip in February. The only issue is that it conflicts with basketball season, and so if we have a lot of students who play basketball, we may not want to miss a potential playoff situation or practice right before playoffs.
So, then you might go in April, depending upon who your participants are?
Exactly. And that's also why there's a difference in cost. The Bate Foundation trip, the cost would go, would be pretty much around $1,500 if we went in February, but I had them price it on a group of five students for the April vacation, because the number of participants would increase, that price would go down.
So, would we kind of share our tour guide with all those different schools?
Yeah.
Sounds like a good way to make it more economical, if we're coordinating that, possibly.
I feel like we interrupted you. Were you finished? I thought you were done.
I think through the questions, we've covered the rest of the material.
This, Mrs. Angeles came to me, and we have talked about several of the variables here, but this proposal has my support. Mrs. Melanson's support as well.
Okay, so this is planned for next year?
Yes.
I think we have to with our field trip policy, any international trip, yeah.
Any further questions?
So, were you looking at just consensus today, or just presenting it?
We were hoping to get your permission to move forward with planning.
Go forward.
Yes. Any further questions?
I guess my only question would be, did you look at the State Department site and stuff, I mean, just kind of to assess the visiting each of the countries, and I know with that Zika virus, you know, I don't know how far it's going to spread or anything, but have you considered that and looked into that at all?
Yes. There are precautions that are already in place in terms of suggested, or not suggested, it's required that students pack a deep bug spray. They also are encouraged to use permethrin to treat their clothes or purchase permethrin-treated clothes through outdoor companies. There's netting for when they're sleeping, encouraged to wear longer sleeves. And I know that the Profile Lisbon and Regional group actually just completed a trip over this February vacation, and the mix of everything, and haven't had, you know, everything.
Yeah, I know, I'm probably...
No, I think at this point, well, most of it is, the concern is towards pregnant women.
Right, no, I understand. But there's, yeah, but, yeah. I think they're still figuring it out a little bit.
Yes.
Obviously, you can have rules and regs, and to follow and to dress, and all of that anyway, and I like the fact that some of them have already gone on a overseas trip like that. Have we?
We did a Spain and France trip four, six, three years ago. Okay, any further questions? Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the possible trip to Costa Rica or Dominican Republic for the 2017 year.
Any further discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Do I hear approval for the minutes of February 15? So, do we hear a second? Any errors, corrections, or omissions?
I, yes. Under Roman numeral five, B, I think we should say the Lakeway Elementary School principal search, and be specific rather than just principal search, so it's clear what we're talking about there. And if you look at Roman numeral number nine, the final bullet, it reads also, after meeting with Chief Smith, it was decided that they would be bringing a proposal to the board in March for their consideration on approving Alice training for staff. And I just wanted to get clarification, is, David, is they the police department, or is that the safety committee, or what is the?
Well, it will come through, we have been in contact with Chief Smith, and he's prepared to come at the next meeting, so I would say they is the police department.
Okay, okay, and this is, and just because it's going to come to the next meeting, I just want to be, I just want to make sure I understand, so that, because we haven't seen, like, in a, the safety committee is officially recommending this to the board? Is that in the administration and everyone is asked?
Yes.
So, is there going to be some type of, you'll just report that to us?
We will report it to you. I've been in touch with Chief Smith. I shared with Chief Smith, the board's desire to hold parent and community forums. He has asked that we publicize our next board meeting, where he will make a formal presentation to the board to encourage parents to attend. He finds that his resources are stretched thin because of frequent requests to make presentations, so he's asking us to invite parents and community to the presentation at our next meeting, where he will review the components of Alice and ask for the board's permission to train.
Okay, so that, so he's going to present training to the staff. I just want to kind of, because I know Barbara had some questions, and she's not here, and I just want to either get it reflected in the minutes, but since it's coming next time, but just, it seems like we might talk about it quickly. They're asking to train the staff, so that's one side of it, and I'm assuming that we're going to be updating our emergency operations plan to reflect this new approach we're going to take to this.
That's correct.
Okay. And the other piece I'm concerned about is there's the training of the staff, and then there's how the staff presents this in the classroom, and we have a very, you know, we have a school, just we have kids who are three in our preschool, you know, up to 18, 19-year-olds in the high school, probably older, and so there's the piece that the police department are going, is going to present about how this is going to work with training the staff, but I'm wondering, has the staff, have the administration figured out how this is going to be communicated with the children, and what, you know, what does that look like? Because I know there's, there's some questions still about that for me.
The Project Alice training that has gone on in schools has had age-appropriate components to it. In addition to training the staff, the police department will be training trainers, and those trainers will be stationed in each of the schools. And as we go, you teach the basic components of it, and then each school develops implementation strategies that are age-appropriate for their, for the kids in their schools.
So, if parents come to this meeting, invite parents to come to get more information about this, will the administration be prepared to give information about what that looks like at the elementary school specifically?
I don't think so, because we haven't been trained. Until you're trained, you can't come up with a plan, and you need, we need to know what the components are, and as we have developed our current safety plans, we have taken it really one component at a time, worked on it, put it in place, tested it, modified it, moved on to the next component. And the most important thing from my standpoint is that Alice training will be an alternative to some of our conventional training that has gone on in the past, and it's going to be very important that we have, at the faculty and staff level, an ongoing discussion before we implement it with kids in the classroom.
Yeah, I mean, because you're asking the board to make an approval of something when we don't really know exactly what it's going to look like in implementation in terms of, I'm not saying that I don't agree with it, okay? I think it's important, I think it's, but I, I really do want to understand that, so I don't know how other people feel about that, but I, I mean, I don't, I, I want to get the process rolling, I agree with that, but I, I, I do want to understand what it's going to look like in terms of implementation, so.
I think that's fair, and I think, I'm hoping that we'll get, we'll get there to that point before you ask us to do anything final.
Well, we need permission to go ahead and get Chief Smith in to do some training with faculty and staff. Absent that, we're not going to have the information necessary to do the implementation, the logistical aspects of it. And, you know, it's, we've caught a bit on a catch-22 here.
Yeah.
And so, all we're asking for is a conceptual agreement for Chief Smith to meet with faculty and staff and show them what Alice is, and beyond that, train trainers.
Also, from Chief Smith, I heard that he wanted us to have some trainers within the school, so my question would be, who's going to pick those people at the high school and elementary level? Who's going to want to do it? Somebody's going to have to be asked.
Yeah, I think, you know, it's a good question, and it's going to take, in my mind, it's going to take a special person, and it may not be the building principal, but it may be somebody who is interested in safety, safety training, who has a good working relationship with the adults in the building, whose focus is largely on promoting safety, training for safety, analyzing our drills, feeding it back to administration, helping administration make the necessary adjustments, and going back out and retraining with the adults. So, it'll be, it'll be an important person. We can certainly request volunteers, but I would say that administration should be making the final appointments, given the lay of land. I mean, that's, you know, I don't know whether Mr. Baden would be the point person here, for example, or whether it would be Mr. DeMers, because I know he's very interested and has worked on safety plans here, or whether we have a faculty member who may be an auxiliary police officer or sheriff's deputy. You know, those are the kinds of things that we would have to find out.
Yeah, well, I think as you hash out that emergency operation plan, you know, as this gets, because I don't, you know, I think there'll be some changes to it, probably based upon this, that'll, you know, those things will get, will get fleshed out, but that, that's, you know, it puts, it puts us in a little bit of a, you know, not knowing fully what, what, I guess, I guess I hope that you'll come back to the board with what the, what is going to be said in the classroom to some extent, when, you know, if you do do a practice or whatever, a practice drill or something like that, to, to help us understand how it is being shared with the kids.
I think that you could make this contingent upon regular quarterly reports back, and that would, I mean, typically, the board adopts a policy and charges the superintendent with developing procedures to implement, and I think what we're talking about here is right in that same between policy and procedures. And what I hear you saying is, we want reassurance that this fits the circumstances that we meet in our schools, and that it is appropriate, and that you can be reassured, that the parents understand when they may question it back to board members. So, you know, I see nothing that would prohibit regular quarterly checkbacks. We do this as a matter, of course, with our current safety plans. Whenever we hold a drill, there's an immediate debrief, we take notes, we make adjustments, and then implement those adjustments. The difference here is, it is quite a different approach.
Yes, and it is, you know, to have your door barricaded when you're in a kindergarten classroom. That's very different from going out for a fire room, so that, you know, so I just, just have to be really thoughtful.
Yes.
In our implementation, so, and I hope some parents and community members will come to ask questions, and it's, I think that will help us.
We could, what we will do is we will put out an advertisement, post it, we can put an advertisement in the newspaper that parents are encouraged to go.
I would put it on the website, because we put on the website the basketball games and that kind of stuff, final thing. I would put one on there for the parents.
I don't know, but you could do a phone call, too, because that really reaches all the people.
Don't we know of any other schools that have already implemented anything like this?
They have, I can't tell you which ones, because I really don't know, but particularly in the central and southern part of the state.
Yeah, all right.
There's a lot on the web, if you surf the web, you know, you know, there's pros and cons for it, so it might be worse, you know.
I just don't feel qualified to know, even when you tell me what's right and what's not, and what will work and what won't, or what's right, you know, I just don't know.
Well, I read on the Department of Education site, and the FEMA guidelines do, do talk about an active shooter and different responses to that, which seem, you know, and I'm not an expert on this at all, but seem to sort of follow what Chief Smith's presentation was the last time he came, so if that's of any help, so, but I did read that, it was published in 2013, I did read that document, so.
Any further comments about the minutes?
I just have a question on Roman numeral ten, where we went into non-public and we took with us Al Smith, Kellin Nolan, Mike Dusette, and Greg Eastman. I think we need to have somewhere in there that they were dismissed or that they left the meeting, otherwise it appears that they stayed through all of the nominations and discussion about. So, I think somewhere there needs to be prior to coming out of non-public. I'm not sure if we know what time they dismissed, but...
I don't know, but I can do that, I have.
Okay.
Anything else?
Have we ever explained on back of Leslie's comment what Alice is to anyone other?
I can, I can do that.
Like in the minutes, it's just Alice. I know.
Oh, you mean what the acronym stands for?
Well, I know, but will anybody reading these minutes know, or should we take that out?
Yeah, that's a good idea.
And then, and that's it, then.
Okay, all in favor with the corrections, amendments, and so forth with these minutes, February 15?
Aye.
Yes, aye.
Aye. Motion carries. A motion to accept the school minutes of February 16.
So...
Do we hear a second?
Second.
Any errors or omissions?
Well, just wanted to clarify under present. I know that I came in late to that meeting, but should my name still be at the top as present of the meeting? And then, in addition, it shows me having left prior to the, prior to coming out of non-public and doing the consensus, and I thought we came out of non-public and we did the consensus before I left, but I don't know what, I'm not 100% sure if I remember that right, so.
I think we got to talk.
I think, yeah.
So...
Okay. I think he very quickly left the meeting at 5:05 PM and gave his consensus.
Only because you showed the vote is 4-0.
Yeah.
For the adjournment, you mean, and to come out? Yeah, I mean, I think, yeah.
Want to correct those?
I, well, I guess I'm not sure that is when you left the meeting.
Right.
I mean, we, we did do that consensus after, you know, we talked about it, you know, but I mean, the consensus, I mean, the consensus is really, I mean, it wasn't, it was a consensus, and that sort of represents, that is, that we all, you know, are you okay with that?
Yeah.
So, we can just add your name at the beginning, you know, join the meeting at 3:45?
Sure.
All in favor with the corrections?
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of the work session of February 25?
So...
Do we hear a second? Yeah. Any corrections?
Another question I have is, I know Barbara called in by speakerphone, should she be added to the present just at the top? Or no, because she phoned in? That's what I'm looking for.
I think, I think we rehearse in phone rings, fine.
Okay.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, manifest, I believe we're going around someplace. Superintendent search. The board made an offer to the superintendent candidate recommended by the search committee on February 29, and the candidate declined the offer on March 2. The board met on March 3 and made a decision unanimously to reopen the position. Applications will be screened as soon as they arrive, and interviews will begin as soon as possible. The superintendent search committee was notified of the candidate's decision after our meeting. They have been asked to stay on, and they have agreed. So, with that being said, the superintendent search was reopened on Friday last week, and approximately so far right now, we have nine candidates. That's all I can say. So, principal search, Lakeway.
I have a question.
Okay.
Do you have a meeting scheduled?
We haven't got a meeting scheduled, I've got a meeting scheduled, because we're doing early next week.
Okay, so like, holding next week to, that you would, yeah, okay, great.
Principal search at Lakeway, we already have met. We have three candidates. We have interviewed via Skype two of the candidates. The third one will be interviewed on Friday. The screening committee will meet on Friday, the 18th, to review the results of the recorded screening, the recorded interviews, and we'll take under consideration those three candidates and report to me, and I will report to the board at your next meeting. will report to the board at your next meeting.
All right, on the, next on the agenda is the Lakeway roof engineering. So it sounds like Terry was getting a request for proposal, right? For the scope of services on the Lakeway multipurpose room roof? I think that's what it is.
The facilities committee, excuse me, has discussed roofs at Lakeway many times, brought it to the board. We had discussions during the budget season about the roofs at Lakeway, and the inclination was to do the multipurpose room roof with funds from the capital reserve fund. The engineering needs to be done before RFPs are issued and we find a vendor to actually do the roof. Because of the change in materials in the last 50 years, change in construction techniques, it was felt that we should have an engineering study, analyze the roof that is there, look at the potential for different materials, look at the effect of adding additional insulation, and see what that might lead to in terms of snow loads, that type of issue. We have a proposal from Tyree to do the engineering for an amount not to exceed $3,000. We're looking at this point to have permission to draw up to $3,000 from the capital reserve fund for buildings and facilities in order to get the engineering study done, so we can then proceed with RFPs on the actual roof.
From the capital reserve fund for this?
Yes.
You don't feel like you have it in the budget? In our, in this year's budget?
The way it would probably happen is we'd spend the money, and if we actually need to draw from the reserve fund, we will. But we wouldn't, we wouldn't invoice the reserve fund until the amounts have been spent. So we still have an opportunity to, to use current funds if needed.
Okay.
Or if available.
Yeah.
But because we have to get the study done, if we're going to use the reserve fund, we need permission to do it, and move from there.
Okay, has everybody read this?
Yes.
Okay. I guess we're going to need a vote to not exceed, not exceed $3,000 for the Lakeway roof load capacity, taking the monies from the current budget if we can, and if not, to the capital reserve.
Before we move on that, I mentioned to Al at a recent basketball game that I had a member of the community approach me and tell me that they thought that a load capacity evaluation was done on Lakeway within the last four to five years. So prior, or fairly recent, four to five years, I believe, they said that they thought they did a roof load capacity study at Lakeway already. So before we move forward with actually doing the load capacity review, I don't know if Al has had a chance to review that, to see if those, if that actually occurred. He seemed to think, he seemed to think it was other parts of other roofs, other roofs within the Lakeway building. But before we move forward and do a study on the roof, I wanted to be assured that we hadn't already done it for that existing roof that we're looking to do. So I don't mind moving forward and approving this pending that.
Pending that research.
That research shows that had not been done previously. I just wouldn't think we would need to spend the money if we've already done it within the last four or five years.
Depends how long ago it was done, because things change.
Sure.
Structures change.
But within the last four or five years, the actual structure, I don't think has changed. The roof.
Wouldn't become any weaker.
Right, the roof may be weaker, or the roof may be more damaged, but the actual structure supporting it shouldn't have changed. So I haven't heard back from Al, but I mentioned it to him at a basketball game, and he said that he thought it was the, the other roofs at Lakeway, but he would take a look.
The second floor, maybe, that would replace.
Yeah, but he would take a look, so I don't know if he had a chance already.
He and I had a conversation about this, and my recollection of that conversation was that this, the research that he had done did not indicate that this had been, had had a recent structural exam. But with a contingency that then allowed us to do the research, if it hasn't been done, then to go ahead with the analysis.
So would you like that?
Sure. So I'll make a motion to accept the proposal from Tyree and Associates dated February 24th, 2016, not to exceed more than $3,000 for a Lakeway elementary school roof load capacity evaluation.
Of which this is a multipurpose room.
For the multipurpose, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Pending, pending review of recent structural evaluations down the last four to five years.
Okay. Funds from.
Oh, funds taken from the existing budget.
And then capital reserve.
And then capital reserves, if existing funds don't exist.
Facilities capital.
Facility.
Second?
Any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next on the agenda is the site exploration committee guidelines. So do you want to read this one? I was going to read this one.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm fine with that. It's the, it's what we, it was distributed on January 19th to everybody, so, okay, go ahead.
Advisory committee to the board on policy, VDA, site exploration committee. The Lowson School Board is appointing members to a site exploration committee. This committee will systematically investigate possible sites to construct a new elementary school, should the board move that project forward in the future. The purpose of the committee is to work in an advisory role to the school board. The board requested the committee study and rank several recommendations of best sites for a new elementary school in Littleton. This information will enhance the board's ultimate decision-making process. The next thing was, a written report should be submitted to the board by, and my thoughts, I don't know if anybody's got their thoughts, but October 1st of 2016, just for budgetary purposes, because that's what we're doing.
I didn't, I didn't hear that one.
October 1st, by October 1st, 2016?
I think that's fair.
Okay.
I had, I didn't know if we wanted to call it the elementary school site exploration.
Oh, maybe we should.
Yeah, I just, I have a couple.
Fine.
I don't know what you guys think about for the name of it. Too long, Millie?
I don't know, it's good, though. Yeah, what other choice do we have? Kind of have to.
No, I think we have to name, we have to name this school that we're looking after.
Yeah.
It's the elementary school.
Yeah, I'm open to suggestions, that's why I want to go.
It's good we should name it, designate it, I think.
And you had the idea of maybe putting a year after it, right? I had something in my note, like 2016 or something.
Yeah, only because we've done this, you know, more than once, so.
Yeah.
So we could call it Elementary School Site Exploration Committee 2016. That's fine.
Say it again, love.
Um, Elementary School Site Exploration, Exploration Committee 2016.
Why not?
So.
What covers that? Can we get, can we just say Lakeway, or no? The elementary? No, because elementary, we could say Lakeway K2, well.
No, Lakeway Elementary School, or Elementary School.
Elementary School.
Just elementary?
Yeah.
All right.
I guess the other thing is, once we approve some members on this committee, we need to clarify the skill sets, which might be helpful. And I know that Leslie put down a whole bunch of people, a bunch of types of people.
Which I pulled from a document on the DOE.
Yep.
So.
I mean, I.
I don't know what suggestion, if other people have suggestions.
I think it might be helpful to have an engineer on the committee at this point, somebody from utilities on the committee, and an elementary school administrator, including the two board members.
I think it'd be even valuable to get a teacher who might know.
For the site selection.
Yeah, absolutely, just, that will know, I think it'd be valuable to have a teacher.
Okay.
And then one of the things everyone was reading in that book, legal, somebody with a legal background.
Yeah, but no, I'm not sure that we need a legal person right now.
Well, not practicing still, not, not, I mean, I know retired people that have knowledge and they have of legal.
One of the reasons we talked, that we talked about in the last meeting, of having somebody with that background, is that a lot of legal contracts, whether it be the land wording that we might read from the state or from local town, might have language in it that would be valuable to have somebody with that.
Right.
Background that can kind of maneuver through some of that language and help us better understand it. It was kind of the idea that we talked about, having somebody with that type of background.
Okay.
David, did you do anything like this at any of your previous jobs, you know, in your previous role?
No, I didn't.
No, okay. All right, I'm just hoping for some.
If you only slipped down in our, out of that one. No, I have not done, done facilities renovation. We, we did some renovations after Hurricane Ivy, but that was really restoring what was already there, so we didn't have committees working on it.
Yeah.
I just thought a couple more people, possibly is.
We, we take these suggestions from the board, if I'm understanding correctly, names that you have thought of and what not when we meet, how, I mean, we have to meet first.
Well, I know, I know that, but once we appoint people to the committee, the board will bring them to non-public and discuss them first. But this is just an idea of getting who should be on that exploration committee.
Well, I got it back. I thought we were, the committee would appoint people, I thought the chairman, there's a couple of people were, when people were in the committee, we'd bring those for your approval. You're saying now that the school board selects people, and I'm a little confused here.
We bring names into non-public.
Yeah.
For school board discussion, and then we would nominate them eventually when we came out into public session.
Okay, the school board, that's that, without the, the, okay.
I mean, I just thought of somebody like from the fire department and the police department.
Yeah, I put emergency responder in here because the DOE had that on, you know, just to sort of consider those ideas, but I don't, they're stretched pretty thin, it's not like, maybe there's, and maybe they don't have to be on the committee every time, but you can get feedback from them along the line, you know, that might be a better.
A liaison or somebody to go to for.
Yeah, they could be maybe a liaison.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So.
And then, you know, as I was reading through all of this stuff that you also added on, I thought whoever's on, gets the final vote on that committee should have that information at hand, you know, like.
Oh, to consider.
Consideration of types of sites.
Right, yes, that's, I agree, that that's something we want them to consider. You know, those types of, just as they're thinking about the different sites, you know, this, these are the things we want to be considered. Yeah, okay. Does that sound reasonable? Okay. So if you want, I can edit this, you know, this document in hand. Sure.
Yeah, it was helpful.
And we can, I mean.
Approve it at your next meeting?
Pardon me?
Edit it, distribute it, approve it at your next meeting?
I think that's reasonable, because that, that would be the 21st, and then you could, and I think in terms of the, the people, I mean, I think there's flex on that, you know, this was an idea of.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? Who to try to get on the committee.
Yep.
So, okay, I can do that.
All right. So by consensus, we'll let Leslie advance that.
Yep, and then it'll come out with the next packet, and hopefully you guys will adopt it.
Okay. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the DIA fund balance policy, which auditors have told us that we need to annually review this, and this much we did last year. I don't think, personally, I don't think anything needs to be changed, if you've all read it. Was there some questions you wanted to ask?
I can make a motion that we approve policy, DIA fund balances.
Do we hear a second?
Second. Sorry, just reading.
Second. Second. Any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Ian, could I, Erin has to pass some information along to me that I should have shared with facilities, is that, would it be possible for me to do that?
I guess, yeah.
Okay. She just wanted, she, she wanted us to know that the House Bill 549, which had gone to the finance committee, which was to start funding the building aid for new projects again, was voted down by the finance committee 25 to 0, and so it's very, it's not going to happen.
But doesn't it have to go back?
Go back for a voice.
Yes, Erin, Erin anticipated that it was 25 to 0, that, I think her words, you know, she anticipated that there was very little hope at this point of it passing. But on the, on the good side of it, House Bill 231, which did, does look like it did pass, and what that has to do with is, if you made a safety improvement that was identified by the state fire marshal, that you could, if you made it ahead of time, you know, before, before doing a project, you could, and you didn't get any state aid for that improvement, you could then use that as part of your application when you do it, like a building aid, if there is ever any building aid ever again, so, which is, who knows? So, so anyways, I just want, she had asked me to share that, so.
Okay, well, that's good, because we're going to need all help when you have.
Yeah.
Okay, I think concept of interest was still on there, but that policy is still under review. Leslie and I will meet with Dr. Fisher, and then we're going to send it to the lawyer for their review and bring it back to the board. So superintendent's report.
Fitzville Nutrition Update, Tom has been doing some work with the liaison with Fitzville. Tom, do you want to share what you have learned?
David McGurn, who is, was here at the meeting on approval of Fitzville initially, sent over some preliminary budget information for next year, which I expect will become the basis of the contract proposal. At this point, using their staff and their benefits policies, their anticipated costs, estimating revenue, which is still fairly conservative, looking at a net loss to the program, which would be supported by district funds of about $53,000 for next year. He apologizes because he doesn't think the program has gotten the kick that they were anticipating. He still thinks there is tremendous potential and great opportunity to get a program going the way they had originally hoped it would be, just, it just hasn't happened yet. So they feel they're taking a very conservative approach. In fact, a late call this afternoon indicates that the contract being put together to be reviewed for next year will have a not to exceed clause of $53,000, so if.
A not to exceed what?
Not to, a clause that costs to the district will not exceed.
Okay.
A net of $53,000. That will be the basis for the contract going forward. Along with the contract, even though it's essentially a renewal, we still have to go through the entire process with the state, and once we. And once we have language put in place, numbers put in place, has to go down to the state for their review and approval before we can execute it. We're starting to get it to a tight time window, so we're pursuing that aggressively.
So, what's your anticipated timeframe for a contract from Fitzville? Because it's gonna take a little longer at the state level.
Well, yes. And time is of the essence, and they are aware, and will be working on it. I don't have a delivery date at this point.
Tom, is it unreasonable to at least get the proposal from Fitzville by the April, April, the first April meeting?
From my perspective, it's not unreasonable. I can't, I can't speak for them.
And then, and then have it vetted at the state afterwards?
That would be a good target, yes.
I know that we have exchanged a series of emails this last two weeks, really putting pressure on, if you can say that, to have a proposal developed. So, let's see what we can do. The latest being the April meeting, which is, what is the April?
It's not like it's a surprise.
What was that feeling?
It's not like it's a surprise, I mean, we need to have.
Nope.
Yeah.
It's April 4th.
So how far below the lunch, you know, what they projected for lunch numbers and what we're actually doing, what, what are we doing? I mean, what, I mean, what are our numbers right now for purchases and stuff? I mean, in comparison to what they projected and where we are right now?
With the blended program, some of their folks, some of our folks.
Yeah.
Not yet experiencing the additional sales that they still believe is a potential. Some unanticipated costs that obviously weren't in the original calculations. I'm still in a range of $100,000 loss this year.
And David, did they bring in all the equipment that they had mentioned when they presented this idea to us a year ago? The smoothie bar and the taco, I don't remember what they, I think it was a taco bar. Did they bring in all that equipment?
I don't know if they brought it all in. I know they brought it, so I'll check on that and have an answer for you at our next meeting.
Because that was kind of key to how they thought they were gonna grow the volume of this program.
Right.
You know, so if they didn't provide that stuff, then I can understand why the numbers didn't go up.
I think that there's more to it. Tom was talking to me about that this afternoon. There's more to it than just equipment.
It just seems like, it's like pulling teeth here. We've asked and tried to get a handle, get arms around this program. We had such great hope and anticipation that it was going to work. And now, now we're hearing another not like.
Well, I, I can discuss this a little more in non-public.
Thank you.
Was it a parent survey? I know there was a parent survey on the website.
Yeah.
And did, did they?
I haven't seen the results of that yet.
Okay, so I, yeah. So we, we need some good communication with our vendor. So.
Now, the other thing, is the, everybody okay with that? Early childhood education program?
Yes, I think I reported earlier that I met with Mr. Tucker probably three or four weeks ago. Told him that I would have a report ready for the second meeting in March. So I will have an overview for you.
And will that report?
No, I can say March, I said.
You said April in the paper.
April. Yeah, I'll have it for you for your first April meeting, which is April 4th.
And David, will that report address the questions from February 11th that Anne kind of had to compile from the board members?
Yeah, I will, I will take over that.
Include that, okay. Great, thank you.
Well, that takes a lot of pressure off for the next meeting. Because I thought, I'm sitting here thinking, oh, my lawyer, I've got to get that ready for the 21st, but April, April looks.
You said April in there.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Anything else from your perspective?
Nothing much from my perspective anymore.
All right, with that being said, I'd like the motion to go into non-public, please.
Make a motion to enter into non-public session into paragraph 2, section 3 of the RIC 91A colon 3 of the Wright Mill Law, for numbers 2, the hiring of any persons as a public employee, and number 3, matters that would adversely affect the reputation of any person other than a member of the board. Taking with us the superintendent.
Business manager and high school principal.
And the high school principal.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Will Cobble?
Cook.
Robbins.
Wiggott. Nelson. Thank you.
Thank you.